Branch, please forgive me. Stephen, and then please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most kind and loving Heavenly Father, as we pause at this moment, Lord, we ask for your continued guidance and direction. Heavenly Father, the burdens on this council and these officials are great. And I would ask Heavenly Father that you would lighten their load, that you would assist them every day in their responsibilities. Guide, direct, and protect us through this meeting, and we pray it humbly in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
And this brings us to citizens' request. And Becky Haake, I believe you have five minutes, and please state your name and your address, please.
Becky Haake, 10516 East 26 Terrace. I'm here tonight to speak about the Independence Square Master Plan. In 1983, Ordinance Number 775 was created, the Independence Square Special Business District. It created a special tax rate for the area of 85 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. This was a special tax that was not to go into the general fund, but a special fund to help the development improve the square. Then, on December 3rd of 1984, a blight study was done and found that the area was to be blighted. With this study, the Independence Square 353 Redevelopment Plan was put into place. The purpose was to acquire property for redevelopment. This was a tax abatement program, again, tax money that did not go into the general fund, but a special fund to help redevelop the square. In 2000, the first comprehensive historic preservation plan was put into place. This was to help preserve the historic values of the square with signage, plaques, planters, and urns. Then again, in February 22nd, 2005, the Independence Square Revitalization Plan was approved. January 23rd, 2007, the Historic Square Streetscape Master Plan was adopted. With this, the plan was to be funded with a TIF and a SIT. In 2007, over 50% of the redevelopment area was owned either by government entities or was tax exempt. Today, approximately 40 properties are owned by a government agency, and approximately 45 are owned by one owner under LLCs. In 2013, again, the blight study was done, and lo and behold, it was found to be blighted. In this study, every property designated in the designated area was listed as an economic liability. At this time, the City Council voted a TIF for the Independence Square. This TIF was formed for public beautification, new streetscapes, as well as facade and structural improvements to privately owned buildings. As of the last turned-in report date of June 1st of 2023, this TIF has brought in over 1.5 millions from eats and pilots fees for these projects. If you read the blight study report and drive around the area, you will find that some of these issues still are in the same condition as they were then. Then, August 3rd, 2020, the City Council voted in a SIT for the Independence Square to help with the improvements. Per the 2024 budget of the SIT turned in, an extra 1% sales tax that the consumers pay is bringing in additional $95,000 a year. This district is also an opportunity zone, which gives the businesses and the property owners special tax breaks for growth and improvement. As you can see, this basic plan has been around with multiple financing options and has been in place over 42 years. We have also heard a lot about it and saw a lot of the drawings last year, talking about the geo-bond issues. After 42 years, maybe it's time to look at another way to do this, other than just throwing millions of dollars at it, which has not worked. There are businesses up there, they are quite busy, and that proves that people are willing to go to the square if it's what they're looking for is up there. The gameplays, the theater, coffee shops, the breweries, theater, they all seem to be doing fine. German Restaurant, before they retired, they was busy every weekend. When I go up there to shop, most of the time, I'm the only customer in the stores. A few weeks ago, we went up there for dinner on a Saturday night about 7:00. There were only three tables in there, and we were one of them. Maybe we should stop talking about building apartments to bring in different people and figure out what the Independence residents want. What are they looking for? They've already proven that if it's there, they will come to the square for what they want. So this area would be built up organically and stop trying to force it. We seem to keep doing the same old thing, and isn't that the meaning of insanity?
Thank you. That now brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move to support the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Could you please pull Resolution 25-782?
Resolution 25-782, is that correct, Councilman?
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If you could pull items 5 through 10? Same question on all of them, so.
That's okay. And, Mr. City Counselor, if I could ask, if we do pull them, then we need to actually vote on each one of them separately?
You can vote on all of them together if you want. Once they're, I mean, they're all together now on the consent agenda. You could keep them in, if you want to keep them in a bundle, you can, or if you want to break them up, you can. That's up to you all.
Okay. So the way we would do that, if I'm correct, is have the council member, when it's his turn to speak, is to say, make a motion to accept items number 5 through 10, and then they get a second. He would ask us questions on those, then we could approve all of them in one fell swoop at that point.
That is correct. But if at any point, anyone wasn't comfortable doing that, then any one member could ask that they be considered separately.
Right. And certainly, in Robert's rules, you can always move to, what is it, separate the items or separate the question, I think is the appropriate term. So, very, very good. Okay. So, excellent. We've never had that before, so.
Trying to keep you on your toes.
You are keeping me on my toes. It's well done, but thank God for Councilor Cover. So, very, very good. And actually, I think we're out of, no, I'm teasing. Anyone else want to consider anything else for separate consideration? Anyone else want to consider anything else for separate consideration? For the sake of clarity, I want to restate what has so far been done. Councilmember Stewart wants to pull 25-782. Councilmember Fears is pulling items number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Those are what have been pulled so far. The table is still open to pull anything separately if anyone wants to do that. If not, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to resolutions. Councilmember Stewart, 25-782, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution due to the impending departure of our current city manager that will establish a recruitment subcommittee of city council members that will basically come up with a process, go through the process of hiring somebody. Due to the public interest in this, and I've been contacted by now three individuals from the city, I actually think these meetings need to be recorded at a minimum and put out on our YouTube channel. So I'm going to make a motion to amend this. I want to add a section number 7, and it's essentially going to say, "Open meetings of the subcommittee will be recorded, archived, and made available for public viewing."
Any discussion on the amendment?
Second to the amendment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question for the City Manager.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so I know that typically our meetings that we record and publicize like that are either in this room or in IUC. My concern is relative to this committee might need to meet multiple times in a week, one week, and maybe not at all the next week, or something of that nature. Hard to say exactly what we might need to do. And so knowing that those rooms are, this room here has cord in it most of the time, and that room has lots of scheduled meetings. My question really is, typically, I think we would have something like this in Conference Room A. So my really question is, we have the, I will call it owl device that we have. Can we just set that up in that room so that we can just start a Teams meeting and hit record, and then later on, it can be published or made available that way? Will that work? Or is, I mean, if that's the case, then I don't see a real conflict, because that room we can usually get access to pretty easy.
Yes, so a couple of things there. I've spoken with Councilmember Stewart, and as I understand his desire and intent, it's not necessarily that the meeting be broadcast live as it is happening, but recorded and made available for viewing at somebody's convenience or leisure, whenever that may be. So stored on the city's website and our YouTube page and things of that nature. To do so would simply require that we record that as a Microsoft Teams meeting. We can utilize the technology that you referenced in Conference Room A, so we can still post that as a public meeting, open the room up to the public to attend in person if they want, but then also be able to record that very, very simply, archive it, and then the public would be able to view it at their leisure.
Okay. Well, if we can do that, then I don't have any concerns.
Anyone else have other further discussion on the amendment? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the amendment. Just for clarity, though, portions of the meeting that would be done and closed, we would do according to the Missouri Sunshine Rules and follow state statutes for those. So I just want people to know that portions of this will be open to the public and portions will be closed based on HR needs. So just for clarification, but otherwise, no objection to the amendment.
Anyone else have other further questions? I might just ask a technical question, if I may, and I may be going down a rabbit hole that this body doesn't need to do, and I sometimes do that. Would it be possible just to have the three main members of the committee, because they're going to be the ones that are talking most of the time, if the process is there, just have them on a Teams computer right in front of themselves, so we don't have to worry about setting up the owl, taking the owl down? And then you'll also get better sound. If they have a headset on or a microphone like this that they're speaking right into, then you'll avoid the feedback elsewhere. If they have a headset on, you'll really avoid the feedback. And so almost make it like a Zoom type of meeting, even though it'd be on Teams. And that may, all you have to do then is not even have to worry about staff even setting up the owl or getting that set up. You can just literally click, play, record, it records it, and then just publish that. I don't know if we want to ask our communications staff if that would be a better approach to this and a much easier approach for them. I just thought about this as we were talking about it.
Sure. So we can certainly indulge, but if it's okay, Mayor, we can also just ask staff to follow the path of least resistance and make sure that it's set up to where it's most convenient for the committee members, but equally, if not more important, that it's the sound and audio are good for the public who will be viewing it.
Right, because the owl, sometimes you have kind of weird angles on it, whereas if you have a computer right in front of you, it's a clear image, and then you also, you've got the microphone right there, boom, and you can, you know, everyone can get a microphone for their own computer, have it ready to go, and then we have your meetings. And then also, when the committee has meetings, if someone's at home or something like that, then it doesn't have to worry about being in the room, they could do it that way, and you have still the Teams process. But I don't know if that's, if I'm getting wonky and going down a path that's too much detailed for this. And no one offend me if I'm getting too wonky.
I think that's more detail than we need for the amendment, but, I mean, I think we let staff figure out the best way to do it.
That works for me. I have just asked a question and want to get that feedback. Anybody else have any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
With that, given that we do a lot of stuff electronically, getting the angle and stuff here with your computer, the angle of that's going to be weird as I'm, it's going to be awkward.
Right.
So I think we do the past that we were discussing, and then we move forward with that.
That's perfectly good. I will let our communications staff make that decision. We're just saying, hey, it'll be recorded, it'll be certainly recorded.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Anyone else? Any further discussion on the amendment? So we've got a motion and a second on the amendment. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to the main Resolution 25-782. Councilmember Stewart, the main resolution is your, the floor is yours, so please proceed.
Just make a motion to approve the amendment, or I'm sorry, a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion on that? And Councilmember McCandless, this is your resolution, so I don't know if you wanted time to discuss it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The intent of this subcommittee, for people who may not have read the resolution, I would like to be sure people know what we're voting on. This is a working subcommittee to do much of the process work to prepare for the full council's input. So, for example, this subcommittee will address crafting the RFP to solicit responses so that we can then interview and select a search firm. This will be a national search, so we're going to need some assistance from a high-quality search firm to bring us acceptable and excellent candidates. It will also be that we establish the contract parameters for the deliverables from the search firm. So how are they going to go about their work? What does the timeline look like? Where are they going to source their candidates from? All of those things that we need to line out in the contract. And then, really, a key piece is to be sure that we have the opportunity for public engagement, and what advice do they have to us for how we can make sure there are opportunities for that? And then, of course, the process for screening candidates, et cetera. So this will be the Workhorse Committee to do those things, to prepare for the full engagement of the entire city council. So with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Anyone else further discussion on 25-782? Seeing no further discussion on 25-782, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-782 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, as amended. And Councilmember Fears, we'll let you proceed with 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 and 10.
I'd like to move items 5 through 10.
Be considered all as one item?
Yep.
Thank you very much. And if anyone wants to separate the item, we can do that, but if there's no objection, we'll do it all in one item. And then, Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I have just a question for the City Manager on this, and may want to bring someone else, I don't know. And really, it's all the same question. So as I look through these resolutions, the contracts that we're purchasing this material on, I mean, it's all stuff for power and light. It's all, the contracts are dated back from 2000, anywhere from 2019, 2020, 2021, in that timeframe. I just want to understand a little bit more relative to, does that mean we're paying 2019 prices, or does that mean, you know, and we're under those contracts? How often do those get rebid, that sort of thing? I can't imagine, I mean, if we're paying 2019 prices, that's great, but I kind of have that doubt. So anyway, I just, so I just, that's my question.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate the attention to detail. I'm going to ask our Director of Finance, Melissa Cabrera, who's department oversees our procurement and contract management functions, to come address that question for you.
Good evening. So it is dependent upon the contracts a lot of times. So often, when we're bidding out for those multi-year contracts, they will have different stipulations in them, where we either have set pricing, sometimes they escalate as a certain percentage of rates. But oftentimes, we find, especially with these larger projects, that they will, they continue to honor whatever pricing we were given whenever the contracts were first executed. So, I mean, I'm happy to, at some point, you know, we can sit down, we can look at the contracts, and we can look at the pricing pages, because that's really where these come from, and it is contract dependent.
So the contracts, being five, six years old or whatever, that doesn't make them, I mean, we don't have to go out to bid every so often, we can retain those contracts.
Yes, yes. We oftentimes, we do multi-year contracts for that purpose, because it does allow us to negotiate a lower price upfront, and then the renewals are less than if we were going out each year, especially, you know, with things like inflation and tariffs. So if we can hang on to those older contracts, a lot of times, it does help us to reduce prices. We do try to go out and rebid. We are often required to go out and rebid, but that does, you know, again, depend on whatever the initial term of those contracts were. And once they expire, then we would take them out to be bid again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else questions on 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, or 10 on the consent agenda? Anyone else have other further questions?
Already made a motion. John second.
Okay, perfect. All right, we've got a motion and a second for items number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. If there's no objections, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on items number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And items number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to our ordinances, brings us to 25-060. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-060, second reading, an ordinance amending the Independence City Code, Chapter 18, traffic sponsored by Councilmember McCandless, second reading.
Any further discussion? Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So this item is one that we have discussed before. We set it aside so that we could get a couple of other questions answered, and I will ask the City Manager, can you please, just for clarity for the community, talk to us about what are allowed uses and what are not allowed uses?
Absolutely. So the, really, the enabling point of this ordinance when it came forward was, we are aware of neighborhood associations, homeowner associations throughout town that are trying to do a good thing, maintaining the common areas in their neighborhood subdivisions, and to make their work easier, often have some sort of vehicle, not a, you know, authorized road vehicle, traditional automobile, but some sort of implement, equipment, et cetera, to transport water, or landscaping, or other materials to help tend to these common areas. Technically, by city code, those are not illegal, or they are not legal, I should say, because they are not a true automobile as envisioned by city code. So what we are doing with this ordinance is to authorize those kind of implement to operate on our city roadway, somebody that's transporting water to that common area, somebody that's looking to plant landscaping, et cetera. What we're not looking to do is to authorize four-wheelers on city streets, or to authorize some sort of side-by-side on city streets, or even a golf cart that's not authorized to be off of a designated path or area. So not trying to open up the can of worms here, but looking for a very narrowly tailored solution to, solution that benefits our community when people are trying to do good by taking care of common areas, beautification, et cetera, in their neighborhoods and commercial areas, et cetera.
So just to clarify for the community, this doesn't allow them to be on roads over 35 miles per hour. It does not allow children to be riding on vehicles like this. They cannot be on any of our trails. It really is very narrowly tailored to specific type of vehicle, has to have lights, has to have turn signals, has to obey all of the roadside parameters. So I appreciate that clarification, and Councilmember Perkins got his questions answered that he had from a previous session, so I am ready to move this forward for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-060? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-060 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to 25-064. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-064, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $32 million principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2025 of the City of Independence, Missouri, and certain other documents and actions by the city, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-064?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to give the floor to Councilmember Fears. He caught my attention first, so you will be next in line.
Mr. City Manager, could you, for the public, just review what this is doing? I mean, it's 32 million, obviously a lot of money, and, you know, we passed the bonds, but there's a process that we have to go through to issue those bonds, and if you could just kind of outline that, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, sir. So back on April the 8th, the community voted in favor of approval of question number two, which authorized the city to issue debt in an amount up to $55 million to address street maintenance, bridge repair, and sidewalk improvements. Of course, there were certain amounts allocated for each of those three outcomes that I just referenced. What the community voted on was allowing the city to issue that debt, but now we have to go through formal processes to issue the debt. So what you're voting on tonight is the first tranche of funds, 32 million of the 52 million, approving us to go into the private marketplace and competitively sell these bonds. Investors will look at these, they will determine interest in them, and then we will sell these bonds, which will raise the revenue necessary for us to do these projects. And then, of course, over a period of time, those bonds will be repaid with the voter authorization to increase the property tax by a commensurate amount. So of the 55 million that was approved, tonight, you're giving approval for us to go sell the first 32 million of that 55 million to start tackling the projects that we've identified for the community through our bond education process.
Okay. And so let's assume that some of our citizens would like to purchase some of these bonds. Can you just, I don't know if you can answer the question of how they might go about that, but I'm assuming that we may have some citizens that want to invest in our community in that way? And is there, is there someone that can answer that question?
Let's ask our financial advisor from Columbia Capital to come up and see if he can give a plug on that. Kalen Dwyer from Columbia Capital.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kalen Dwyer with Columbia Capital. So thanks, Zach. So what we're doing here, and this is pursuant to the city charter, which requires that the bonds are sold competitively, is we're going to post something called a Notice of Sell. And the Notice of Sell is a document that says, hey, investment banks that purchase municipal bonds and then resell those to investors, the City of Independence, Missouri, is selling bonds on such and such date in such and such amount, and those bonds are going to mature in the following payment dates. And so because we're selling these bonds competitively, there is no direct way to ensure that any individual investor can participate in this deal. These bonds are going to be sold to the investment bank that agrees to purchase them at the lowest interest rate to the city on September 3rd, which is when we plan to sell them. when we plan to sell them. So the bonds will be available at some point shortly after their price to be resold to investors. So investors that have a financial advisor or a broker-dealer, they can call them and try to, and then that broker-dealer or financial advisor can then try to participate in some capacity in repurchasing the bonds. But my suspicion is, is that these bonds will be subject to what are called going-away orders, which means that when the bank places bids for the bonds, the majority of those bonds are already going to be sold to investors. And so the investment bank purchasing the bonds isn't taking a lot of risk. And the investors will already be determined. And they'll probably be mostly institutional investors. So it's not that individual customers couldn't, or individual citizens of the community couldn't, purchase the bonds in the secondary market. They certainly could, but they almost certainly won't be able to participate in the original offering of them because we're doing it competitively. Now, sometimes we sell bonds on a negotiated basis, which we did earlier this year for the public safety projects. In that instance, we have a little more control over this, the bond sale process. And we can dictate which bonds are, we can usually put rules in place to ensure that retail investors have an opportunity to purchase certain bonds at certain maturities. And they get allocated those bonds, or at least a minimum allocation of those bonds. But in this case, it's difficult to do that simply because of the nature of the process. They're going to be sold competitively to whichever bank it is that offers the best interest rate to the city.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
That answered the majority of my questions. The only other thing I have is Mr. City Manager, I know we've discussed this before in various forums, but, so once all this said and done, and we get this money in the bank, I guess, essentially, what's the first projects on the list to get done? And what, like, let's say, whatever, if it's a bridge, like, what stage are we in the process? Is that, can you answer that tonight?
Right. With the council's indulgence, I'd ask Deputy City Manager Lisa Reynolds to come speak to that.
Thank you.
While she's coming, I will note that part of the bond sale was we needed to identify our project list. So we do have that information for you.
Okay. And I know, like I said, I've never discussed it before. I just, it's a refresher.
Absolutely, great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Lisa Reynolds, Deputy City Manager. The very first projects that we'll be working on with the GeoBond dollars are the Chrisler Avenue Bridge and bundled with the Kentucky Bridge over Mill Creek. And that's the one that's most recently been closed of the two Kentucky bridges. Those are actually actively out to bid right now. So the intent in bundling those two together was to get better interest than we did the last time that we put Chrisler out and got no responses whatsoever. So hopefully more interest with bigger project. While those are being worked on, so this would be construction phase to go ahead and repair and replace those two. While that's going on, the Kentucky over Rock Creek Bridge, that several people toured as part of the GeoBond conversation, that one will be going into design. So designed this year for replacement next year. So that's the bridge side of the house. We're actively working on the overlay list. So roughly, not roughly, $6 million a year will be dedicated to overlay. And we've drawn a line in the sand with a pavement condition index of 40. So anything that's 40 and below will be targeted for the GeoBond dollars. Talking about just how to get biggest bang for the bucks. So if we target all residential areas with GeoBond dollars and then use our annual pavement maintenance money, that's roughly another $2 million for overlay for arterials and the major thoroughfares throughout town, or if we flip that. But looking right now, sorting through all the many roads, unfortunately, in town that are below a pavement condition index, or if you hear us shorthand refer to that as PCI, of 40 or below. And we'll do that 6 million a year for five years. And then we're going to plan to spend roughly 1.5 million a year, or sorry, 1.7 million a year on sidewalks, targeting the seven elementary schools that were identified in the GeoBond preliminary process. So Fairmount, Castle Park, Elm Grove, Mill Creek, those. Castle Park is absolutely the first elementary school that we'll be targeting. And we'll work down the list from there. I think Castle Park is first, and ultimately Elm Grove is in year five. And we're filtering in between based on how much work we can get done quickly versus things that require a lot more acquisition and storm and things like that. We do have a tentative schedule that was provided to Bond Council when, for the sale of the bonds. And I'm happy to send that out to the full council for your reference. It, of course, is a living document and subject to change as we get responses to bids and things like that, but there is a tentative schedule.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
May I inquire of the Deputy City Manager? One more, a couple more questions. So when will the citizens, about when, when will we start seeing some things out in our communities? Like, what's your guess?
We really hope to see something on the bridges this year yet. Unfortunately, they went out to bid a little later than anticipated. There are other entities that had to sign off for approval of the bridges. It wasn't just the city that got to approve those plans. So we did need to wait for those. We have those approvals now, ready to go. So it's actively being bid. We hope this year. We're absolutely planning to bid the overlay this year so that work can start in the spring. So very early, '26, and hopefully we start to see bridge work yet this year in '25.
And as someone who's been doing this a long time, what has this injection of money meant for your work and for the community?
From an overlay perspective and a bridge perspective, really honestly, it's everything. Would love to stand here and say that, you know, the new pavement maintenance program that we've started doing over the last four years is the solution, but it's simply not. While we're making great gains using seals in addition to overlay, we're still not outpacing deterioration. So this infusion of money allows us to actually gain ground, which I honestly, it would be a decade before we saw anywhere near the same kind of improvement that we could see in just one to two years of the GeoBond money for overlay alone. And that being said, with the money that's available for the capital projects on the street maintenance side, so the bridges, streets, and all those things, we do a great job of going and securing federal grants for projects. There's the 24 Highway and Ash Project on the agenda this evening, $1.4 million in grant dollars. But we have the match portion, and that match portion comes out of the street sales tax dollars. So unfortunately, to do all those projects, bridges are often that thing that we really struggle to find a funding source for. And there just aren't as many grant opportunities to fund bridge projects. So again, especially on that side of the house, it's almost the only way that we would be able to address not only one, but up to 14 bridges throughout town.
Thank you. I just, additionally, if it's okay, I want to be sure to thank the community who voted yes on question two and made this possible. And we're going to see some improvements, and this is such a fantastic thing to happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So you gave us kind of timeframes on bridges and overlay. Can you give me an idea on Castle Park, since that's your first sidewalk, when you think we would start to see work on that?
That should be also '26, working through design right now. We had some elements around the school that we were already actively working on design and just applying for those grants to get the work done. But again, economies of scale, it makes sense to do that as a larger package than to break it out into piecemeal portions. So working on that full amount of money's worth of work around that school to put out and have done in '26.
And you were very careful with, there are multiple partners. It's helpful for people to understand that, like, we don't own all of the ground under these bridges, and we had to work with our railroad partners. And so, you know, they move at a different speed of urgency than we do. And I just applaud your team for their persistence in being sure that we got things taken care of. I mean, the railroads want things to work, too. They want the bridges to be excellent, but, you know, we had to fit into their schedule of importance. And so your team did great work on that. So thank you very much.
Well, and actually, that does lead me to one thing that's worth mentioning, just so the public is aware. While we do work on several of the bridges that are over railroad tracks or in railroad right-of-way, the progress won't necessarily be as fast, probably, as people might expect, were it not in railroad right-of-way. That's a lot to say all at once. Largely because we have to work within their hours that they can take the trains out of service or keep that track clear. So that absolutely will impact the schedule once the work begins. You'll see probably the non-railroad bridges be done quicker. It's not intentional, it's just, we, everybody, we have to prioritize safety, of course, above all else. And we need to work when the tracks are safe to work in and around, so.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just a point of clarity for that council, woman McCandless, Deputy City Manager Reynolds and Assistant City Manager DeSalle, we went down to the UP office, gosh, Union Pacific's offices about three weeks ago to talk to them about if they can help us out moving this a little faster, since that was their last piece of the puzzle there. And they were very gracious doing that, so.
Anyone else? Other further discussion on item 25-064? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero-six-four, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero-six-five. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-five, second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 19425 in the home ARP 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan and Making the Necessary Appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-065?
Mr. City? Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you just outline this for the community? Because this is an exciting opportunity for us.
Would be glad to. These funds are grant dollars that come to the City of Independence through the federal government and really are quite essential to allowing the city to play a role in helping residents maintain their homes so that they're able to stay in them. A lot of times, these funds are directed towards individuals who maybe don't have the financial resources to do some of that upkeep on their home that's essential to keeping the home livable in conformance with city code. And I know, as this group has said many times, one of the easiest ways to address homelessness is to prevent it. So these dollars help us do that. They're very essential to our strategy, not just dealing with code enforcement, neighborhood blight, et cetera, but also part of our overall strategy of addressing and preventing homelessness. So these dollars play a very essential role in meeting a number of objectives of the city council.
And we do these in partnership with some of our nonprofit community work?
Correct. These dollars are suballocated to, as you say, a number of our nonprofit partners in the city who have better expertise than we do in identifying that need and administering those in a non-biased, impartial manner, and much more efficient than the city could be in getting those dollars out the door.
And they are income-based, so not just everybody who would like a new gutter gets to apply for these?
Yes. Again, these are individuals who probably, for whatever reason, are lacking the income to be able to do this. So again, income restricted and qualifications in place to ensure that those most in need are receiving those funds.
And I know we've really targeted some of our senior members of the community so they can stay in their homes. Many of them have maintained their homes for years, but as they get older, they're finding that much harder to do. So really appreciate the dedication to this. And a shout out to our partners, especially Truman Habitat, who's done exceptional work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero-six-five, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to twenty-five zero-six-six. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-six, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Independence, Missouri, to amend its Articles of Incorporation, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-066? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero-six-six, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to twenty-five zero-six-seven. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-seven, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from Jackson County, Missouri, through a receipt award from Combat, which allocates $90,000 to the City of Independence, Missouri, for a substance use and prevention program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19682, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-067? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero-six-seven, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five zero-six-eight. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-eight, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the realignment of the East US 24 Highway and South Ash Avenue intersection in connection with the 24 Highway Complete Streets Phase III Project, City Project Number 112212 slash Federal Project Number CM AQ dash 3379 parentheses 443, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-068?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. It's super exciting that we're putting the last pieces of this puzzle, very long puzzle, together as we're coming to the Phase III of this section. So I'm excited that we're, we will be getting there. We've had some low-level conversations with Assistant City Manager DeSalle and the Community Improvement District over there about economic incentives and investment and redoing the neighborhoods and working with the area over there. So those continue to persist, and they will continue to persist. So this is an exciting little piece of the puzzle that we're finally getting connected. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five zero-six-eight, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-six-nine, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of $81,370 for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year 2025-2026, and execute the Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing full future change orders for additional funding and/or time executions, and authorizing certain future appropriations, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero, first reading, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 2025 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA, memorandum of understanding for the Kansas City/Overland Park DEA Task Force Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $165,015, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-one, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the 2025 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA, memorandum of understanding for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $135,054.31, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-two, first reading, an ordinance amending Independence City Code, Section 5.01.023, license denial, suspension, or revocation, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-three, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R18 slash PUD, moderate-density residential slash planned unit development, and District C1 Neighborhood Commercial to District C1 Neighborhood Commercial for property located at 201 East Partridge Avenue, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-four, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a convenience store at 11037 East Winter Road in Independence, Missouri, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-seven-five, first reading, an ordinance approving a final plat for Little Blue Estates, Plat 1B, located on Quail Drive, West of Jackson Drive in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. And that brings us to Councilmember comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, it's always nice to go on vacation, but it's always nice to come home. And so it's nice to be back in Independence, and I appreciate that. Today- Today, as I watched throughout my neighborhood and other places, couldn't help but notice a lot of school buses out. And I know that the school's back in session as of today. Just wanted to remind the community to be on the lookout for school kids, you know, transporting themselves to and from school, and try to just be aware of that. And a couple of other things coming up on Wednesday. The Chamber of Commerce has the state of the schools, and so that'll be interesting to hear what our superintendents have to say. And then lastly, we have this little event on Labor Day weekend. We won't be back together in this way till then. And so we have this little event called Santa Calagon. So I hope we have a successful Santa Calagon for the chamber and for our community. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
Well, Councilmember Fears stole my thing. That's what, I live on a street with an elementary school, so I was going to mention about school back in because I forgot that today was back to school. So yeah, just same thing that he said, just be aware. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had the privilege of being the guest speaker at the Child and Animal Neglect and Abuse Coalition Meeting. I shared an update on the formation of the Independence Animal Cruelty Task Force, including our next steps and the important work ahead. It was an honor to speak with experts in these fields, and I continue to learn so much from these conversations. I also attended last week the Independence School District's annual convocation. I've been to a lot of these. I thought this year's was one of the best, and it made me proud to be a product of our hometown public school system. And then lastly, I just wanted to touch on the change that's happening in our city recently and just share my thoughts about what's ahead of us. I am genuinely excited about the work we get to do going forward. I'm proud to be a part of a new generation of council members. Over the last year, we've learned to work together, and even when we disagree, we've shown that we can still make important decisions with the best interest of our community at heart. I've been driving down Truman Road recently to avoid the I-70 construction, so I've been passing the old milk jug. I don't know if any of you remember the milk jug, but that's where I used to walk to buy candy bars with my sisters. I've been thinking a lot about how surprised that girl would be to know that one day she'd help shape the future of her hometown. It's a responsibility I take very seriously, and it's one that inspires me every day. So tonight, I want to publicly challenge this council to keep working hard, to collaborate, to communicate, and above all, to put our community above ourselves. That means thinking about all our residents from every district, from every walk of life. I know we are capable of this, and I hope that you will share my optimism for the change and progress ahead. I am confident in the good work that lies before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
I, too, wanted to talk about the weight of the responsibility we have ahead of us as well as this being an opportunity to reshape our city. I could never say it as eloquently as Councilmember Wiley, so I'll stop there and change to another topic. The community really comes out to support its kids. Community Services League had 1,500 children come through for backpacks, school supplies, brand-new tennis shoes, and socks. Everything left the building. So just the number of volunteers it took to process all of that, and there were back-to-school